Good afternoon. We will call to order the April 2018 City of Columbia Planning Commission meeting. We'd like to welcome Planning Commission members, staff, and guests. I would ask that everyone turn their cell phones and PDAs to the silent or vibrate mode. The administrator will now proceed with the roll call.
Mr. Tupper. Ms. Harts. Mr. Taylor. Mr. Coen.
Here.
Mr. Stegemeier.
Here.
And Mr. Frost. We have quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to do a brief review of the meeting format. Applicants with requests before the Planning Commission are allotted a presentation time of 10 minutes. This time should include but is not limited to an overview of the project, case history, and any pertinent meetings held regarding the request. This time also includes all persons presenting information on behalf of the applicant, such as attorneys, engineers, and architects. This time limit does not include any questions asked by Planning Commission or staff regarding requests. Members of the general public are given the opportunity to address their concerns in intervals of two minutes. The administrator has a timer and will make presenters aware of when that time has expired. The Planning Commission reserves the right to amend these procedures on a case-by-case basis. And there's a little timer to your left. It'll have a green, yellow, and red light. When the red light's off, time to stop. The Consent Agenda. The Planning Commission uses the Consent Agenda to approve non-controversial or routine matters by a single motion or vote. Examples of such items include approval of site plans, annexations, and street names. If a member of the Planning Commission or the general public would like to discuss an item on the Consent Agenda, then that item is removed from the Consent Agenda and considered during the meeting. The Planning Commission then approves the remaining Consent Agenda items. The administrator will now read the Consent Agenda.
Your Consent Agenda this evening consists of the approval of the March 5, 2018 minutes as well as two annexation comprehensive plan map amendments and zoning map amendments, which would be Items Number Two, which is 2716 Shop Road, as well as Item Number Three, 1321 Piney Grove Road. The Consent Agenda continues with a zoning map amendment on Item Number Four for 42.31 acres on Pageant Road. This is to rezone from PUDR to an RS3 zoning classification. The next item on the Consent Agenda is a minor amendment to a planned unit development. It is Item Number Five. It is 5.76 acres bounded by the corner of Wind Lane and Cliff Kinder Road and Hay Meadow Lane, and that is a large-scale PUD. And then we also have three site plans this evening. Those consist of Item Number Six, which is 5.76 acres bounded by the corner of Wind Lane, Cliff Kinder Road, and Hay Meadow Lane, which is a request for approval to construct a 39-lot, single-family residential subdivision. Item Number Seven, which is about 52 acres at 3,600 block of Pageant Road, and this request is to construct a subdivision of 155 single-family lots. And then Item Number Eight will wrap up our Consent Agenda this evening, which is for 334 Harbison Boulevard, and it is a request for a site plan approval to reconstruct a convenience store and gasoline service sales facility on that property.
Thank you. Are there any Commission members or guests today who wish to have any items on the Consent Agenda moved to the regular agenda tonight? If not, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Consent Agenda is approved. We will now proceed with the regular agenda. I would also like to ask everyone who comes forward to please state their name clearly before speaking.
All right. So the first item we have this evening on the regular agenda is a major amendment to a planned unit development district. This major amendment is to this PUD, and the applicant is here this evening to answer any questions, but I do want to point out we have one correction for you this evening. And that is referencing one of the PUD documents in your packet. It's actually the last, almost the last page of text, right before you see the two drawings for this particular item. And it states that the second element of the development will include a plus-or-minus 6,600-square-foot church, and the applicant has indicated it should be about a 9,600-square-foot church. So I wanted to make that correction for you for that numerical value. And the reason for this amendment is basically the PUD was very specific of what could go on this particular lot, and the church has acquired it, and it's this parcel highlighted on your screen, and without amendment they wouldn't be able to build the facility that they're looking for.
What was staff's recommendation?
The recommendation for this one is to recommend that you grant the approval for the modification of the document.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
They are.
Okay. Would you like to come forward, please?
Mary McNeil. Our desire is to, as stated, to build a building on Kaufman, and our original drawings did not include a space for us to do a food bank within our building as well as being able to do some additional class space. And so that's why we're requesting the additional 3,000 square foot up to 9,000.
Okay. Do any Commission members have questions for the applicant? Any questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and talk on this? Okay. If not, I'd like to call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the major amendment.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll revise the motion to include up to 9,600 square foot.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion's approved.
So Item Number 10 on your agenda this evening is a zoning and map and text amendment. This is for the Seminary Ridge Historic District. It is a request to modify the historic district from an architectural conservation district to a protection area district. And Amy Moore with our offices here, if you want more detail about that, I also know there's a number of residents here also.
Okay. Is the applicant here as well? Or is there an applicant?
The applicant was properly Mr. Davis from the City Council on behalf of residents.
Do we have any questions for Amy? If I'm reading this correctly, is this to change the heights?
No, actually, the neighborhood was an architectural conservation district as of 2013.
Right.
And recently, the neighborhood approached staff asking for exploration of that district and other options, and after conversations and meetings with them, they expressed interest in simplifying the district down to a protection area, which removes both review, some review, and more protection from the neighborhood. So it's a slightly less regulated form of a historic district than the architectural conservation district.
Okay.
All right.
But it was driven by the community members that asked this to be reviewed?
It was indeed.
Got it. Makes sense.
Would anyone like to speak on this?
Lance Folsom. When we considered this a few years ago, we didn't know what we were getting into. It sounded good. Our meetings had about 10 people or less if we were lucky. As we've seen this implemented, we liked the idea of the historic part, but some of the requirements were pretty stringent, and a lot of our moderate-income neighbors couldn't improve their properties like they wanted to, like energy-efficient windows. So when this came up a few months ago, our meetings swelled to 20 or 30 people, and we voted 27 to 3 in our last meeting to go ahead and proceed to try and change it to a protection area to allow our residents to improve their properties a little easier, and we'd appreciate your help in helping us do that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm also a property owner in Seminary Ridge, and I'd like to enhance what Lance said, that this is about hopefully people improving their property, become a little more energy-efficient, making the neighborhood more attractive, so that younger people will move in in the future also. But we are interested in retaining the historic significance of the neighborhood by making this changed to this. So I appreciate you giving it a good close look, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Please do.
Yes, my name is Robert Hendricks. I am a homeowner in the district. The home belongs to my mother-in-law, Mary Taylor, and she passed it over to my wife, Jacqueline, and me, and we would like to oppose the objection because there's never been a homeowners' association in the district. This is a neighborhood association. There's over 200 homeowners that live in this area that are impacted by changing of this thing from a historic district to a protection district. It's like having an antique car, and all of a sudden you say, okay, we're going to put anything we want on it, and that's going to change the value. What's going to change the value of our homes? And on information and belief, the applicant doesn't have the right to submit an application unless they have all the homeowners sign off on it in a letter giving them the right to vote for them as a thing. They're not a homeowners' association. They are a neighborhood association, so they do not really have the right to speak for 200 homeowners with only 30 people present. It's also voluntary. There's nothing that's passed through covenant. There's nothing that's passed through deed, and there's nothing that's passed through, you know, when you sell the property. So membership is not a requirement. So like my mother-in-law, she's 93 years old. You know, for the last four years, she's had a bad hip, so she hasn't been able to attend meetings. There's other elderly people that doesn't attend meetings, and there's also other people that have houses that are in the, you know, that don't live there. Now, at this meeting, he said there was 27 people that voted. Part of those people were spouses of homeowners, so that divides it. Part of those people were daughter and mother, and part of them were renters. So how many people present were really homeowners? And that's my question. The homeowners are not being represented properly by changing this by a few people deciding that they're going to vote for homeowners that are not there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Before I ask if anyone else wants to speak, Amy, can you clarify the difference between architectural conservation district to ridge protection area?
An architectural conservation district is an area that has a wealth of original historic structures and original material and features, so that is why there are more regulations around that, because there are more resources there that are important to save. Protection area is one where you have more infill, more demolitions have happened over time, and so it's lost some of that integrity, although there is still recognizable patterns of building forms and things like that, but maybe not quite so much detail and architectural features still exist. And so protection areas typically have less, fewer regulations attached because there's not as much there to protect any longer.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else want to come forward? Yes, sir.
My name is Brian Berg, and I've lived in the neighborhood for 16 years. I'd encourage you to go with the change. The median income in the neighborhood is only $25,000, which makes it virtually impossible to maintain the homes at the level required under the current guidelines. I would also like to clarify that this was an effort on behalf of the neighborhood association. We don't have a homeowners' association, so everyone who lives in the neighborhood is allowed to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to come forward? Any questions from the Commission to staff? Okay, if not, I'd like to call for a motion, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we recommend for approval the amendment of the text of the City of Columbia's Code of Ordinances to delete 17.681 and modify 17.681 to add a Seminary Ridge Architectural Conservation District to Seminary Ridge Protection Area.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Your next item this evening is also a zoning map and text amendment. It is Item Number... Yeah, hold on a minute, though.
I have a different one also.
My intention was to actually have Number 11 at Item Number 12, and Number 12, Item Number 11, because there's a sequence in a relationship between the two, and Item 12, you should really address 12 before you address 11.
Do you want to go to 12?
So if you would give, if somebody would be interested in making a motion to take Item Number 12 first, followed by Item Number 11, that would be great. I think the two will make more logical sense together that way.
Can we have a motion to move Number 12 first before Number 11?
I'd make a motion that we move Number 12 to Number 11.
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion is approved to move Number 12 to Number 11. I mean, in front of Number 11.
So Item Number...
12.
The item before you at the moment, which is Item Number 12 on the agenda, is a zoning map amendment to rezone parcels from Light Industrial District M1, have the industrial M2, the design development area DD, Inovista ID overlay, the design preservation area, which is a DP zoning district, and the mixed-use urban district MX2, to an MX, I'm sorry, 2, the mixed-use urban district MX2, the Inovista design overlay, and the design preservation area DP. Let me get to that particular set of slides. So the reason for this is, as you noticed in the agenda, these two particular parcels have a lot of zoning classifications on them, and the request is to actually rezone them so that the parcels that are all in one ownership, so there are a number of parcels, particularly, you'll see the one that's highlighted on the screen, as well as the one just to the south that's kind of an empty lot with trees, that has a different zoning. It's the intent of the owner to have all, both of these properties in the same zoning districts so that you don't have all these different lines chopping them all up and basically clean up the zoning from that perspective. And so that's the proposal before you. The applicant is here, and we'd be glad to dive deeper if you have any questions.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Bob Fuller. I'm a lawyer in Columbia, and I'm here this afternoon with Ben Arnold, who is the chairman or president of Southern Realty Development Corporation, who is the applicant. And as Mr. Fellows has already suggested to you, this is more a procedural matter to consolidate and make consistent zoning on a parcel that is now more than a single parcel by virtue of its size and use. The company has the ability to acquire an additional three acres to adjoin this 8.7 acres. The property that is under consideration for purchase is Zoned MX2 and has the overlay district for the Inovista and the design district. The property that is presently under your consideration is a larger piece. It's 8.72 acres. It has a portion of M1 zoning. It has a portion of M2 zoning. It has presence in three of the additional overlay districts. It will make going forward and developing a cohesive parcel difficult to have the prospect of having to cross zoning district lines within the development parcel when it is being planned out. It's really a property that is being asked to have a little facelift in order to make it more realistic to work with as future plans develop. There is not a proposed development plan to be considered today. There's not a use imminent to require it to be rezoned this minute, but it will certainly facilitate the ability to realistically and cohesively deal with the entirety of the 11 acres over time as it is appropriate to do that. And as you know, Mr. Arnold's companies have been in the Vista for a good many years of its, as long as it's been the district, and are very conversant with the requirements that are at present, both presently and to be consolidated if it goes to all MX2. We're not asking for variances or special exceptions or any particular treatment on any portion of the property. It's simply to have what has already been a parcel of several identifiable lots becoming yet additionally consolidated with consistent zoning throughout the 11 acres. And that's what the proposition here today is, and we ask your help to do that.
Any questions for the applicant? Any questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else like to come forward on this? If not, I'd like to call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Chairman, that we recommend for approval the request to rezone the parcel from M1, M2, DD, ID, and DP to MX2, ID, and DP.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Motion's approved. Now we're going to Item Number 11.
Correct. Item Number 11 on your agenda is a map and text amendment, and it's modifications of the Inovista design district and the guidelines, as well as the rezoning of 1100 Wayne Street. The, probably the easiest to describe this, let me get to the right slides. So there, in your staff report, there are four essentially full amendments summarized, which I'm going to go over. The first proposal within this application is to rezone a portion of 1100 Wayne Street from the MX, mixed-use urban district MX2, DD, and ID, and DP to a mixed-use MX2, ID, and DP district. Item number, the second subpart of this application is to amend the Inovista design guidelines to reflect proposed changes to the boundaries and the height requirements in the buffer areas and for clarification purposes. Item Number Three, or subpoint of Three of this particular application, is to amend the City of Columbia's official zoning map to extend the boundaries of the ID zoning district and remove the DD zoning district from the same area. And the final subpoint of this particular map and text amendment is to amend the City of Columbia's Code of Ordinances Inovista Design District to reflect proposed changes to the Inovista Design District guidelines and official map. With the item that came before, the way the Inovista Design District, I think if I can summarize this in just a few words, is that it was very specific on a boundary, and by expanding the boundary, there's a number of items that, within the documents, that become more difficult to enforce, and they create some awkward situations. So for instance, in the Inovista Design District, it states, you know, which streets should parking garages have access to and which streets should parking garages not have access to. So there's a lot of things like that, and so for instance, Gervais Street was not listed, so we needed to add Gervais Street under one of those classifications. So that's just one example. They're all detailed within the staff report, but essentially, that's the sort of the gist of a lot of these changes. The other change is there is a buffer boundary that needed to be modified, and with that, I don't know how many of you were on the Commission when we did the West Gervais Plan, but there was a recommendation to do a stepped buffer-type height recommendation from within the historic district, and so we're including that within this particular proposal. So I think there's a map in here. Yeah, so for instance, on the map that's on your screen, which should be on your tablets, there is a 55-foot zone that's approximately so many feet back from Gervais, then an 80-foot zone, and then when you get to that Inovista district, the original boundary there, then it goes up to 150 feet. it goes up to 150 feet. And Inovista itself is an unlimited height district. So this creates that stepping situation envisioned from the West Gervais Plan on this particular parcel, not district-wide, but just for this area. So that's sort of a quick summary of all the pieces within this document before you.
Okay. Do we have any, anybody have questions for staff?
I've got some concerns about these height limitations. This purple area. Are you really saying that has a height limitation of 150 feet? That sounds terribly high.
That is...
For that location, or any location that close to Gervais Street.
That's about, it's approximately one block away, so it is, it is a block. You can see Senate Street just off to the side there. So it's very long. It's probably 400 deep and, I don't know if that's probably a little bit more, so it's probably six to seven feet long, that orange area. So it's not unlike other areas of the historic district. In fact, there's some other boundaries to the north, where you can actually go from the height limits that are in the historic district all the way to unlimited, particularly when you get towards, you know, Assembly Street. So 150 is tall, but if you look at the perimeter of that district, this does keep that height down lower than others.
In the context of what is surrounding this area, I think it's too tall. I think 150-foot-tall building would be out of place here.
Not much, I believe, did we not measure the Adler Building?
The hotel of, just east, I mean, it's 100 or so, and I can't see another building 50% higher than that.
The Hilton or the Hyatt, which hotel I'm trying to...
The one where Ruth Chris is. I forgot the name of the hotel. Okay, yeah.
Hey, John, can you go ahead a couple of slides? I want to ask you a question about a slide that we're not on.
One more. That slide. Okay.
Back. Am I understanding this previous slide, if you go back to where you just were, to show all of the area that's currently purple in that slide has unlimited height currently?
Correct.
Okay.
So currently, anything that's purple on this map has an unlimited height. Anything that's green has a height of 75 feet. And the area that I'm going to call teal, which is that area behind the subject parcel that we're talking about, that currently also is 75, correct?
I think this is a telling slide here, because if you can go right across the railroad tracks and basically build unlimited, this is actually, in some respects, if we were to go to an Inovista Design District, is a little bit more restrictive. Am I reading that?
This is, it is more restrictive than the purple, correct? It is a little bit more...
More restrictive than the other side.
It allows for a little bit more than it currently does.
I've got some real concerns about particularly the unlimited height in this whole purple area.
Well, this unlimited height has been on the books for not, close to a decade.
Well, I've still got concerns about it. I've had concerns about it.
Is there anyone that wants to speak on this tonight? Or is this...
I don't know. I'll just follow up a little bit on the, to try to address the concerns of the unlimited height. What we have found with, from a zoning perspective of unlimited height, is it is, in essence, is self-regulating. So, for instance, Main Street, a lot of the areas along Assembly Street, those are also unlimited. They've been unlimited for decades.
Did you say along Main Street?
Main Street, Assembly Street, in the downtown core.
That's not the Vista, so that's Main Street.
Correct. And this area is Inovista, and Inovista's had an unlimited height for quite a while here. And what we have found is that it is, in essence, a little bit of a self-regulatory thing, because as they have to provide parking and they have to provide other things, there is a balance in terms of economics of how tall you can go. So we have seen some proposals come in that are fairly tall, but they usually need to go a little bit shorter. So right now, you know, we kind of see buildings that are, you know, trying to think of the, one apartment building that's being built, but it's probably, I think it's about seven stories or something like that. So we haven't seen a tremendous height in a lot of our unlimited areas, because they have to balance a parking garage and, you know, all the spaces and that with the height and all of that type of economics.
So it's that one small section?
So, the area of the Inovista expansion is in the red square here.
Right.
And the height variation represents that area where you have the 55, the 80, the 150, these green areas are 75, and the other area, and then the application also is, we deleted and added text within the document.
Any further questions for staff? I'd like to call for a motion then, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. The motion is to recommend approval to rezone a portion of 1100 Wayne Street from mixed-use urban district, design development area, Inovista Design District, and design preservation to mixed-use urban district, Inovista Design District, and design and preservation area. Two, amend Inovista Design District Guidelines to reflect proposed changes to the boundaries and height requirements in the buffer areas. Three, amend the City of Columbia's official zoning map to extend the boundaries of the ID zoning district and remove the DD zoning district from the same area. Four, amend City of Columbia's Code of Ordinances 17-291 and 17-325 to reflect proposed changes to the Inovista Design District Guidelines and the official zoning map.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion or questions for staff? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Nay.
The motion is approved. Is there any other business?
The only other business is we do have a work session coming up later in the month. We did send a meeting invite to you, so if you haven't seen it, if you were out of town last week or something like that, just check it out. But we'll be continuing our discussion about the land development and zoning ordinance.
Have we set a date yet for that? Have we set the date yet?
We did. I believe it's Thursday at lunchtime. We'll have sandwiches, 12, 1:30-ish.
That was, was it the 16? No, no, no. Or the 20?
Thursday, I think.
I think it's next Thursday, which is the 19th.
19. No.
Yes, next Thursday, 19.
Okay. I'd like to get a motion to adjourn, please. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.